Microphone for the BATV broadcast and recording. Uh, third thing is approve of the minutes from May 25th, 2021 special meeting. Anybody have any corrections? additions or anything? Get a motion for approval then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Knop, second by Ewer. Uh, roll call please.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up is items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything to change tonight or add? Okay. Moving then to matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything for items not on the agenda? Didn't see anybody.
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to item number six, which is ordinance twenty-one thirty-two, annexing fourteen thirty-five, fourteen forty, fourteen forty-five Thoria Road, fourteen fifteen, fourteen twenty-five, fourteen twenty-seven Orion Road, and thirteen twenty-four, thirteen thirty-two, and fourteen oh-six North Washington Avenue. And this is part of our wonderful process going around getting all the little donut holes and odd spaces that are not part of the city annexed in.
Right. Or can you put the map up from the staff report? Um, yes, this is, we're resuming our efforts to try and finish off the various islands of unincorporated pockets that are, you know, surrounded by the city limits. Uh, many of these properties, uh, in these areas are on city utilities, one, one city utility or another. Uh, in this particular area, there's nine parcels that are, um, that are involved. There were ten originally, but we had one voluntary, one happened a few months ago because they actually wanted to connect a sewer. Um, all of these properties are connected on one utility or another, except for one parcel. Um, so we are proposing to annex these, this property via the involuntary annexation process. Uh, we did have actually two of the property, two of the nine property owners submit a petition to annex, uh, but because we did not have a hundred percent, uh, we have to proceed with this in a involuntary manner. So, uh, yeah, that's one, just scroll down a little bit more. Um, so it's nine properties, three of which are on Washington Avenue, three of which are on Orion, and then, uh, three of which are on Thoria Road. Um, when these properties are annexed, it would be in the R zero, uh, default district. That's similar to what we've done with all the other annexations. And then at some point we would go back if needed and rezone them to a zoning district that's comparable with their lot size and the adjacent property owners or property zoning situations.
Okay. Does anybody in council have any questions? Yep, we'll get to you in just a second.
I just want to make sure you're ready.
Nope, nope, I'm, I'm aware you're here.
Alderman Knop pass his hand up.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
I had a question. Uh, you said you had a couple of, uh, residents came back and, and volunteered to do this, although it wasn't in time. Did we have any of the other property owners come back with a negative response?
Uh, we had one property owner that we had a discussion with, um, and, uh, they, they were not in favor of, of it. Uh, they didn't feel that there was a need for the change. Um, so they, they just expressed that they would rather stay unincorporated and, uh, not be in the city limits. Um, that particular property is on one city utility though, so, uh, but we did have one person object.
Okay. Any other questions from the comment, or comments from the council? I think we have citizens here that are, want to talk about this. Want to come up and use the microphone? All we need is your name for the record.
I'm on, uh, North Washington up there at, uh, fourteen oh-six North Washington, and you're correct, there is water there, one facility that's been there since nineteen fifty. The problem that I have is you guys are saying that we're an island, and technically I am a peninsula. And I'll explain that. Across the street from me is Forest Preserve, Route twenty-five that you guys are being funded to maintain is a state highway, and we have the Fox River. So therefore, I don't feel like I'm surrounded by the city at this time. So I kind of object because I don't see anything that you guys can do for me right now, being on a septic. You guys say nothing's going to change, but I know for a fact, the first thing that'll happen is my water bill will go up and you'll charge me for a leaf and brush to get rid of. I already have brush removal with the counties. That's my, uh, my complaint.
I guess the, the thing that I would say then, we've discussed this when it's happened with other areas, um, the one thing is, is you're septic, if anything goes wrong with it, the county would not permit rebuilding it. You'd have to hook into the city sewer system.
That's when I sell the house.
Okay.
No, it's, it's in great shape. Uh, it's been rebuilt over the years. It's actually got a triple drain field, which is way oversized what it needs to be. Um, if one ever fails, the next one will take off. In fact, well, the, one of the, one of the fields is not even being used right now. I've checked it several times, and there's very little moisture gets down to it.
Okay.
Because of it's a, uh, a level, a layer. But yeah, that's a good point. Um, you know, if you guys ran city sewer up there and I hooked up, I'd have no trouble. But I don't see anything for it. I just feel that it's going to be extra burden on my part. I bought up there thirty-five years ago because it's close to you guys, which is great, but it's not the city. And I've always been in the country ninety-nine percent of my life, and that's where I want to be, is in the county.
Okay.
It's a personal thing.
Ron?
Yeah, and this, this, we've discussed this a great length with the county, and one big problem we, the city, has is you supposedly must hook on to city electric. And boy, if we do that, we're opening the back lot of...
I'm on ComEd, and I don't know of any, anything to hook me up with city. I have three generators of my own, and there's been times, I actually pay more for the delivery costs of both my gas and electric than I pay for the use of their service. Actual kilowatts is less than when I pay for the delivery charge.
It's the county's decision. I certainly cannot support anything he's advocating because I think it puts the city in a bad position any way we go, whether it's the septic system, the sewer, the streets, anything. You either come into the city or you don't, and we're not here to offer bargain deals for people to come in and take one service and not another, because once we do it, you're going to have a lot of, I could tell you, we would have people calling up here wanting to disconnect from the city electric and hook on to Commonwealth Edison because we would allow this gentleman to do it, just as an example.
But I'm already there. It's not something like I'm going to do. I've been there, been with them thirty-five years. And they're very, very, people complain about their prices, but they're very reliable. That's why I have three generators and they're rusting away because I rarely get to use them. But, you know, if it comes to, uh, the fact that you're saying they have city water, I'm more than willing to disconnect your city water. You can come dig that up. I don't need it. I'll put a well in.
Go up to the county?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know if the county would permit that because you're already hooked up through it.
Anyhow, I called the county, several different people. I don't know who the right person to be talked to, and none of them knew what was going on. I talked to the tax people, I talked to the assessors, they didn't, weren't aware of you guys and, uh, taking, trying to get the property, the people that I talked to. I says, "Well, who can I talk to?" They didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been multiple years that we've been doing this, both east side, west side. There's a lot of different properties like this.
Sure, I understand. But I, um, and it's just a formality, but I tell you, the only thing I can see is that my taxes are going to go up. That's the only benefit I'm going to have.
Yeah, I think the last time we actually looked this up and figured it out, it was, um, how many, four percent?
Yeah, but mine goes up two hundred dollars a year, every year anyhow, so four percent, that's a lot more.
Well, that's the school district.
Well, I understand, I understand.
That's a school district that does that.
Right. And I do see that.
I mean, this has been a, an impetus that we've had at the city council level for, like I said, for the past few years, is to try to get this all...
This is about the eighth time that I think the city has tried to annex us over the years.
Okay.
And, uh, I've either ignored them or fought them, so I've been successful up to now.
Okay, well, I, I don't know what the, the feeling is of this city council, but we've really been trying to do this, and yes, some of them are...
I understand what you're doing.
Are, are willing, and some of them are not willing.
Right. It's like, my property will never go into Geneva, as far as I can tell, because the gas station north of me is already city, so...
So which side of twenty-five are you on? East side?
I, I am.
You are on the east side?
Correct. And I'm getting surrounded. There's four houses behind me because of my fence post that are touching my property technically.
And is the gas station in Batavia?
The gas station is on the corner. They ran septic in from Fabian Parkway, certainly.
But they are city.
And they are city.
So you are technically then surrounded by the city.
No, across the street from me is Forest Preserve, and Forest Preserve is not city.
Is within the city limits, even though it's Forest Preserve?
Okay, um...
I'm working in forty, Thoria Road. I'm here under the same reason, choose not to be annexed into the city.
We just need people to come up to the microphone because we do the recording at a meeting, and that way your comments are captured. Thank you.
And just give, give us your name, and that way we have it for the record.
I'm Doreen Granicki, fourteen forty Thoria Road. I'm here for the same reason that Mr. Thoria is here. Um, I would choose not to be in the city. The only service that I have from the city, which has been in place since nineteen forty-nine, is the water. Everything else, county, independent, you've got Nycor, you've got Commonwealth Edison, septic system, so water is it.
Well, I guess I, I don't, I don't know how else to say it. I mean, this is just something that we've been doing over the years, and we're trying to get the rest of these done and not leave an island.
Hey, Alan?
That's exactly correct.
Um, that was Alderman Serone.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, Alan, I, I would just, uh, would be remiss if we didn't mention that the services of the police and fire are going to be the first ones responding, and there is some unfairness that they get the same service from them without paying for those services.
Are you finished, Mr. Serone?
Yes, thank you.
To counter that, we've had Batavia Fire Protection forever, and, and that's in on our taxes. We've been paying for that, so that's nothing new.
Right, that will go away.
We don't have City of Batavia Police, we actually have the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
Which is right around the corner, so they're actually quite convenient. In the last thirty-five years, I have never had a call from anybody.
That's just the motor pool that's there, that's not the sheriff's office.
I'm sorry.
That's just the motor pool. Yeah, that's where they work on the cars.
But they're close, is what I'm saying. They come by all the time. Anyhow, so it's county, and, and like I said, in the last thirty-five years, I've never had anybody that I've had to call to service for. Um, I had some firefighters in my park, uh, at a party, had the biggest fire I've ever had because of the firefighters are that way, I guess, and a city cop pulled in and said, "Are you a city or county?" I said, "City." I said, "County," and he pulled away. And I told him that this, you know, I get these goofy firemen with this big blaze, and that was the only time I ever had anybody stop for anything. I've gone away and left my doors, uh, garage doors open, come home and forgot that I didn't close it, never had any trouble. So, I'm not worried about that. Sorry.
Okay.
Just wanted to counter it.
Did you want to say anything else?
Well, the one thing that I was going to say, um, I did bring it up the last time that I had met, when the city council was here, is that there is a reciprocal agreement. Yes, we call county. If they are not able to be there in a timely fashion, they do call Batavia. So, I mean, I have probably, let's see, nope, out of the entire time, I've never called them. I've gotten lucky.
Anybody else in the council have any comments? Scott, you want to come up?
Um, one other thing to note is, uh, Thorian and Orion are city streets. Uh, so we do maintain those streets, so these properties, uh, have frontage on them, and they're getting the benefit of city street maintenance and plowing and everything else that, that is entailing that. That's also a city service that they're getting, but they're not paying for.
Okay.
Three houses on Thoria from Orion to Batavia Parkway are in fact...
There's, there's three houses on Thoria that are in the county. Uh, the city is actually maintaining that street, even though a very small part of it is a township road.
Is that Batavia Township or Geneva Township?
That's Geneva Township.
Geneva Township, because it's in Geneva School District as well.
And that won't change, and that was a concern a couple people had. School, public, school, library, and park district will not change.
Yeah, they will never give up anything. Okay, um, if there's no other comments, anybody want to make a motion on this?
I would like to make a final, I absolutely agree to be annexed into the city. My mom and dad were the third people to build there. They wanted it to be county, wanted the open land, so being one of the original residents of that area, I have got to be annexed into the city.
Okay, we'll note that. Okay, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance twenty-one thirty-two, annexing fourteen thirty-five, fourteen forty, fourteen forty-five Thoria Road, fourteen fifteen, fourteen twenty-five, fourteen twenty-seven Orion Road, and thirteen twenty-four, thirteen thirty-two, and fourteen oh-six North Washington Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Uh, roll call please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
Okay. All right, moving on to resolution twenty-one dash seventy dash R. That it will go to city council for a final vote to pass the annexation. Uh, next...
July sixth.
Yeah, July sixth.
Seven thirty P M. Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. Next up is item number seven, resolution twenty-one dash seventy dash R, authorizing contract with Quad Plus to start up and commission vacuum switchgear lineup, outdoor transformer, breakers, protection relay, battery charging system, and associated disconnects at the Paramount Distribution Substation for an amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency amount.
It's one hundred eighty-six thousand, isn't it?
Did I read that wrong? It says eighty-six on my sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the next one, they're, they're related.
It's, it should be, sorry, it should be ninety-three thousand, that was a device, so. Eighty-six, eighty-six thousand is the original amount, that doesn't include the ten percent. But the memo, memo has the right amount, sorry.
Nick?
Sure, well, Rahat's there.
Okay.
Um, the, both this one and the next one are kind of, uh, things that need to be done now that the Paramount Substation's been rebuilt, so I'm just going to turn it over to him for both.
It is correct online, I just looked that up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Paramount Substation, uh, is getting rebuilt, the contractor will be done beginning of July, um, and, and after that, uh, we just have to test all the equipment, make sure that they work with each other, and there is nothing wrong with, uh, the construction that we did. And obviously, the switchgear comes from one place, you know, the transformer, we already had it, uh, buildings come from other places, you know, so everything is being put together, but now you have to do the testing before you put it in service. Um, so typically Siemens have done this type of task for us previously, but, um, lately we are not getting a lot of proposals from Siemens, and Quad Plus has stepped up and, and putting, uh, proposal forward to us, and, and they have the qualified people to do the work. We think that they will be, um, you know, capable of doing what Siemens have done for us for a long time. Um, Quad Plus has, has done incremental stuff for the city. We started with a small twenty-five hundred dollar job with them, and then gave, uh, one of those, uh, in, in the last council meeting, and now this is their third one that they will be doing for us, so...
I personally think it's good that we're getting different contractors to do some of this work, so then hopefully when they start bidding against each other, when they know that they're more on level playing fields, that they're going to be bidding against each other, and hopefully we benefit from that.
That, that is true, and this, this cost proposal is lower than what we got from Siemens in twenty nineteen, so... Any question? I, I did have the breakdown, um, of what the trans, um, what the total cost has been for rebuilding that, uh, Paramount Substation. Um, the, the budget was three point eight three five million dollars, and we are now at three point eight zero. So there is about, um, four hundred, sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings overall in the, in the, um, overall, all the items. Obviously, a couple of items are still ongoing, and, um, we, we think that they will close below what they awarded amount is, so should not be going over by any chance.
It's good to hear. Is Nick still there?
You want me to go to the next one too?
No, I, we have to...
Yes, go ahead. I, I mean, yeah, I have nothing to add to that, this is way above me.
Okay, I guess that...
Does anybody else have any other questions? Then I would, uh, I will make a mo- motion to approve the city council, uh, resolution twenty-one dash seven zero seven dash R for Paramount Substation testing. Roll call please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
And Ewer?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
Okay, up next then is item number eight, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-one dash R, approving a contract with Mead Electric, install thirty-five KV and fifteen KV feeder installation from Paramount Substation to existing feeder facility for an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency amount. Alderman Serone?
Rahat, did you have anything to add on this?
Um, just, just that this one, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, but it came a little bit higher at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. With ten percent contingency, it's at a hundred and eighty-six, but as I indicated, we, we have savings from Paramount Sub itself, project, um, and other projects that Electric has opened so far, like the breaker replacement project. So we don't need a budget amendment at this time, we are just requesting that, that you approve it above the budgeted amount, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Right. And can you explain why, I mean, the, the other bids were even way more?
Yeah, uh, I did, uh, talk to Mead Electric about this a little bit, and I indicated that in the memo, um, it sounds like, and, and this is just from some of the bids that we have opened so far, that are, there are, uh, some contractors who are very busy and some contractors are not. The ones that are not busy, they're really going after work. Like, we, we opened the street program, the street surfacing program, where builders was like way lower than anybody else. Same thing happened here. We asked Mead Electric that, you know, your prices were pretty low compared to other, other contractors. Uh, Michaels, who is actually our, our contractor for the substation itself, we thought that they will give us a good price because they're already working there. Like, they're, you know, people are there, equipments are there, but it sounds like they have other work lined up. Like, they told us that they will be out of the substation on like July ninth, so this is like added work. Um, and we kind of hurried up and gave them the plans and said, you know, "Can you give us a proposal so that you don't leave and come back again?" But it sounds like they're going somewhere to work. It's not like they're leaving and, and going back to Wisconsin, you know, they're like going to other place. So it's, it's, it sounds like the people who are busy, they will put a pretty high price tag and get the jo- I mean, if they get the job, then it's like gravy for them, you know? Uh, but the people who don't have a lot of job, like Mead Electric, you know, they're like, I just, you know, he told me that I was like aggressive, you know, I, I wanted the job, you know, so they may not have enough, and, and another, uh, point that I made to them is, "We want you to finish the work by end of July." And he says, "No problem." Typically, like, you cannot find a contractor who will say, you know, "Yeah, you know, you'll, you'll approve it on July sixth, and I'll get my guys on July seventh to your side."
Yeah.
But he was ag- he was willing to do that. So, um, we are seeing that across the bro- border a little bit, you know, that some people are very aggressive with their prices, and, and some people are like, you know, "If you give it to me, I'll take it, but it's going to be a lot of, you know, um, profit for me if I, if I take it."
Right. Well, in the streets, though, we saved a bunch. Thank God for Mead, because it's, it's still over budget. Did anybody else have any other questions?
Nope. See you.
All right. With, uh, with that, I will make a motion to approve to city council, or recommend to city council, uh, resolution twenty-one dash zero seven one dash R, uh, Paramount Feeder Project.
Second.
Roll call please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
And Ewer?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, do we want to put those last two, the, on consent agenda for next Tuesday night?
Sure.
Okay.
I love talking about the election.
Okay. All right, uh, we will move on then to item number nine, which is a discussion on the fencing surrounding the Pegbona Center for Park District River Rhapsody Series. Laura?
Yes, um, so for this year's River Rhapsody Series, the Park District approached the city because they wanted to, um, serve wine and, um, possibly beer at River Rhapsody Concerts. And, um, because of that, and they can do that utilizing their own, um, K class license, um, which we made that new classification back in, uh, twenty nineteen, and utilizing And utilizing their own trained personnel, they can do that with their service. However, it's necessary to set up a perimeter and post personnel there so that they make sure that they just walk away with alcohol that they have been served. So that's something that's new. We haven't done that in the past with the River Rhapsody concert series. I mentioned two weeks ago that they were going to be putting up the fencing and wanted to give them an opportunity to see what that looked like, see what kind of feedback that we have received from the community. And so now tonight's discussion is an opportunity to discuss how things have been. And along with us this evening is Eric Locker, who has come back out of retirement to do the interview for the Park District right now. Eric, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for the invite, Laura.
Sure. Mark, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I guess, thank you. I was surprised, I remember you having that as an item and then we didn't talk about it, so I thought it was, I didn't think that, that it was going to be something that was done since we had never discussed it. That being said, I, I happen to be out of town for the first Siri, for the first concert, and then I came back and I saw the fencing up on, on a Tuesday. And it, I didn't like what I saw, I'm going to just be blunt, is that you have what would be considered by many to be the crown jewel of our town, right in the middle of town, and it's surrounded by a fence and making it off-putting that people are, that walk through that area generally are like, why is there a fence around here? And I, I just don't, I understand there's effort to be done, but I think it sets a precedent that anybody that would say, hey, I'm going to do something every weekend and I'm just going to put up this temporary fence for the whole summer, we'd be, we're setting ourselves up for a precedent that we would have to do that for anybody that would ask for something like that. And I just, I think it looks awful and I think we need to take it down. So it's as simple as that.
I'll, I'll comment too. I've had a bunch of comments of, you know, what are we doing down there? Are they tearing everything up again? Or we're not going to be able to use that all summer long because they look at it and they think of the construction that just happened on Island Avenue and they think that this is part of that or an extension of that and they think everything is shut down here. So I, I understand the reasoning of why you would want it out there, but I don't know that leaving it up all summer sends the right message to the public because they equate that with, you can't go in there when they see the fencing. Especially if it's up all weekend, nothing's happening there. If they were to come down and there was something there or signage on it, I, I think it might be a little bit more acceptable, but the way it is out there, just a barrier more than anything.
So we know how difficult it would be, you know how the boys' spots go around and they always put the flags up?
Can you use your mic?
Can you use your mic?
Make sure you.
Sorry.
So that they have, so that they have the fence, they, they have the little post in the ground and it's permanently there. How difficult would it be for them to put something like that up where you can easily install the fence for their activities and then roll it up when you're done?
I think that would be a question that Eric might be able to answer for us.
Yes, Eric?
Didn't hear the comment very well.
Okay, so here's the, this, this is Chris Solfa, just a, a question as to feasibility. How difficult would it be to put something in the ground where you're able to then put all the posts in, where you can then pop them out real quick, roll it up, and then install it relatively quickly? Is that something that's feasible or not feasible?
Well, it all comes down to the labor that is involved in providing the security that we need for the event. We've had our overtime held back because everybody's trying to contain costs. And so our services would be drastically affected during the week if, if we had guys having to come in and take it up, set it up and take it back down. Whether it was a roll-up type fence, which is actually takes longer, because that's what we used to use, than, than the ones that we created for the event that is used throughout the town.
I'll play devil's advocate here. I've attended the concerts and there hasn't been any issues with people knowing how to get in and how to get out. The way I also look at this is we've pivoted from many of our businesses down here in Batavia or in downtown because of COVID. And I feel that the Park District is very similar in that position and they're trying to offer a service to help offset some of the costs of what they lost last year. And I look at this as almost as a partnership of, they're trying it out this year, this may not be something permanent, but do we sit there and support them a little bit with what they're trying to do and the offerings of what they're trying to do to get people downtown? Because people are coming downtown, we pass them, they're going to our businesses, they're eating. So this series brings people downtown and people are using our businesses down here. And I see this also supporting the Park District.
I appreciate that comment immensely. The, the crowds that we have, have seen in the last two series have been the best ever. And we completely appreciate the city's support in allowing us to serve the, the wine. It just provides more comfort for everybody.
Eric, what is the date of the last River Rhapsody concert this year?
August fourth.
Okay, good to know. So it's another month?
Yes.
I guess, I understand all of what you just said, Jen, that that's the reality of it. I think with, in my mind, at least one sign on that fence that states why it's out there. If it was River Rhapsody concerts every Wednesday night and it was on the face of that, so when people drove by or walked by, they would understand why it's there. Because the questions I got even at the farmer's market in the rain was, what's the fencing all up around there? Are they tearing that up now? You know, I mean, those are the comments that I got over the weekend from, you know, people just asking me, passing them in downtown. And I think that that's the perception that some people see. Yes, people that know that the concerts are there, they could care less if the fence is up all week. But when somebody else is going by it and nothing's happening in that area, they don't know what it's there for. So if there was that possibility, you know, I, I would think that it would be a sign, if you made it right, that you could use year after year, or at least until it wears out, that would really help that. And I think that would keep the cost down of having to take it down and put it up and take it down and put it up and make it something that at least gave people the opportunity to understand why it was there.
No, I, and that's a great suggestion, but again, you know, I do like that suggestion. But the people that come down, it's, they're coming from all the restaurants. I mean, we were walking after eating dinner and people were going to get ice cream, going to the popcorn depot.
Pick up food and order those.
On a Wednesday night.
We did. We actually went to El Cezanne and got burritos and took them in and sat down and ate them in the park.
Nice.
Yeah, Jen, I'm not disagreeing that people that are going there can figure out, oh, I can, obviously they know there's a concert there and there's people there and they're going to find the entrance. That's not my concern. The concern is about the other six days of the week when somebody just, you know, wants to take a stroll and it just, it's off-putting, I guess. And maybe a sign helps it a little bit, but it's, I'll be honest, the concrete, the, the cinder blocks holding them down, I mean, it just, it, it could be probably done a lot better, that would look, it would look better. I, I, it's hard to say if it would, if it could ever look better because it's just, again, you drive down that street and, and you're, you're, you're going to walk around the riverwalk and you're like, what's going on here? So that's the only, that's my major complaint about it. Maybe the sign helps just to at least create awareness as to why it's there, but.
And maybe next year they can improve upon that based on that feedback. I mean, we have to remember, nobody liked the closing of River Street last year and we made improvements based on feedback. So by providing that feedback, it's the first time they're trying it. You know, we have to give them kudos for that.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would ask, what's the, are you seeing revenues that are offsetting your expenses from the alcohol sales?
That question to Eric?
Yes.
Yes, we are doing very well with that as an option. And it is helping, but we're, you know, in a recovery mode. And we still don't have the approved overtime to, that would be required to go in there. So I like that option of the sign. The only reason we didn't put it on there is in respect to the city sign ordinances associated to downtown. And so if, if you wanted something that would help explain that, that, that is certainly we, you know, our marketing department could create something that's very nice.
I think I could convince enough of the council to say yes to that.
Yeah, you know, with a schedule on it or something?
Right.
I think if it just says every Wednesday night because then they don't have to worry about trying to put dates to it and it can reuse next year.
Yeah, that works.
I like that idea.
Yeah, and I think, again, this is a learning experience and I think you're right, Mark, when you go by it and nothing's happening there, you question it and to me, it looks like a barrier. So that's the reality of that. I, I think you wanted to comment, Keenan?
Is this something we would allow any other organization to leave a fence up when nothing was going on?
It's hard to say. There was months and months at Oak and Swine where there wasn't anything going on with regard to the construction that they had going on and yet they had fencing up.
But they had a permit for construction?
There was a special event.
But the Park District has the, the special event that they have going on every Wednesday is a concert.
But that's what I'm saying, if, if someone were to come out here and have an event, not the Park District, like, let's say some organization wanted to have something out here. Let's say there was a carnival and it was, they were going to have it every, they were going to come back every weekend. Would we allow them to leave their fence up like this the entire time? With, when they like packed up and left and were gone for the weekend and came back on the weekend?
I think that would be something you're, you know, we'd have to.
We would be having the same discussion about that and I think the thing is, it's hard to compare anything else with the Park District because of the relationship we have with the Park District partnering for this whole area downtown here.
Part of it's theirs, but part of it's ours.
Right, and I think so from that standpoint, I think this is really hard to compare to a carnival being there or, you know, I don't want to pick on that, but any other entity doing that.
What I'm saying and what I'm suggesting is that if, if we are going to hold other people to that standard, we should be held to the same standard. So if we wouldn't ourselves leave a fence up, then we shouldn't be allowing someone else to leave a fence up.
So another thing to take into consideration is the mutual support and cooperation amongst and between the different organizations in our town, like the other taxing bodies, but also with Main Street and, and Chamber. And we may, for instance, last year when the governor said that outdoor seating was allowed, the Park District, we asked them if we could borrow their picnic tables for free and put them out on North River Street and they immediately said yes. I don't think that they would have that same arrangement with private entities to allow them to use their property for free for an entire season, but they allowed us to do it. And it worked out because they didn't have outdoor programming that they ordinarily would use those tables for because they would use those for the summer camps for the kids and certainly those were all curtailed. But that would be a reason why we might treat our partner, the Park District, a little bit different than we would treat a private carnival organization.
Scott?
Yeah, I think, you know, one thing is we have a mutual maintenance agreement with the Park District that mows that area. So we, we, you know, we have the property lines that I showed on the map, but you know, we do have a kind of a mutual mowing contract that we have for that. The only thing I would say is, you know, regardless of whether you like the fence or don't like the fence, I think one of the things that I found when I was, you know, mapping this out is, I think it's a little bit off-putting for people that they can't get into this area when it's not being used. So we don't have any other openings for getting in this area other than coming on the Pegbon Center. If there's a way we could have a couple of openings made in, in there, maybe that would be a little bit, you know, more palatable, at least in the meantime, people can get in there and use it.
At the corners where there's sidewalk over here, I think that would be one where if they can make that so that when it's not being used for the concert, they leave it open. Just that one section. Is that, is that doable, Eric?
Right here in the corner? That is open.
It is open now?
Yeah, it, yeah.
The corner is open?
The corner is open.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, we could certainly enlarge those by just opening up one, one section, which is eight feet. So it would make it, you know, more welcoming. There's also a gentleman that has a hand raised for questions. I don't know if you guys see that or not.
Yeah, I think Tony does.
Yes, Alan?
Go ahead, Tony.
Well, yeah, I was, I agree with you, market is quite unsightly at a, you know, a prime location in our town. But the, the question I have, I was there last Wednesday and I saw very few people drinking wine. In fact, the, the, the sales of the wine, I, I really didn't know where it was happening. If I, had I not known that there was going to be the sale of wine, I wouldn't even have known that was happening. I'm wondering what, what the, what kind of volume we were talking about. Is, if, you know, is the price of, you know, ten people, twenty people having a glass of wine worth us having an unsightly fence in, in town all week? You know, I, I, I understand that there's a desire to, to promote the River Rhapsody. I would say, I think you saw the huge turnout because we just started coming off of, of a pandemic. People want to be out, people want to congregate. That's what's driving it. It wasn't, people weren't coming out because they were serving wine because there was very few people drinking wine. So that, that was the observation I have and I totally agree with you, Mark, it's unsightly to have that in town all, all week. So I, I guess a question I would have for, for Eric is, does the Park, Park District see any revenue off of these wine sale? Or is that, is it more about supporting the, the business?
We did, we did actually see a decent level of revenue. We, we had two, was it two or three cases of wine that we had donated and sponsored by a local restaurant. And then we had one bottle remaining at the end of the night. We were almost sold out before the concert ended. So we did very well.
Yeah, so what did, do you have any count on the number of people that, that, you know, came to the event?
Not, not off the top of my head, no, I don't.
Because the amount of people, I've been to a lot of those through the years and, you know, this, this was an excellent turnout that I saw on Wednesday. I was there the previous one, but the, you know, two, three cases of wine for that number of people, I, I would have to say, I, 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 it doesn't, in my eyes, it doesn't justify an unsightly fence for all week or for, for the whole summer.
Alderman Knapp also has his hand up.
Joe, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Welcome to Batavia Keep Off The Grass. That, that was what I thought when I first saw that. And we just got done with the construction that was down there and the next thing we see is, you can't walk here, don't, don't come in here. I understand the purpose of the fence and I want to be very careful that our discussions stay talking about the fence so that Alderman Beck can participate, should she choose to. But I think we may have some other options to achieve the same goal that the Park District's looking for that don't involve the use of a fence. Other towns and other states across the country have come up with a system they call a DORA, Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, where beverages can be transported by foot outside from one place to another without violating any open container restrictions.
So do you mean walking around town with a beverage?
In a, in a, in a very specified district, very delineated signage, signage and maps that don't incorporate fences. And, and again, there's, there's some other things that are out there and I'd like Abby to be part of the, of the conversation because it, it combines a little bit of everything because you can incorporate your shops in with it, people that do and don't allow people to walk in carrying a beverage, say, I don't know, a women's fashion store that would like to have their shoppers having a wine night while a fashion show is going on, but they don't have a liquor license to serve wine. It could be carried from the, from the alcohol establishment two doors down into their establishment without violating any of those laws and still do the same thing we're trying to do. We're trying to get all of the businesses downtown doing something, being involved with each other, giving people something they're looking for because we're all looking for a good drink every now and then. And it, it gets the Park District exactly what they want without having a fence up all the time.
Unfortunately, I don't think that it would have a level of control to it that our police department would be comfortable with.
And, and those would be some of the discussions that we'd want to have with Chief Yule and his staff and to understand how other cities, the size of Batavia and larger and much larger have been doing that this year and how they've been able to enforce it, what kind of participation rate they've had from the businesses and helping to self-police it and, and what kind of issues, if any, it's brought up from a, from a law enforcement standpoint. A lot of more considerations. It's not something you decide today to do and you start doing it tomorrow. It's something longer term, but it, it gets us away from stay off the grass for next year.
I'll join you, Joe, in, in exploring that because I've thought about that several times when we look at River Street or Water Street. And I mean, I don't know if it's the businesses saying, yes, it's okay to take your drink and go out and sit at the table at the other end or up on Water Street where there aren't any fences. And I know it happens. I won't say who did it, but I know it happens. It, it's something that I've thought about that that's something that we have to think about and maybe consult with our police department, how we're allowing things like that to happen.
I don't think we would allow things like that to happen. We have posted rules over there about where alcoholic beverages may be served and where they may be carried to. So I don't think that you would see someone walk past one of our police officers with an alcoholic beverage where they're not allowed, where that situation would not be addressed.
Right, but I don't think we have an officer over there seven days a week on River Street or on Water Street.
We couldn't possibly.
Right, and, and that's the one thing I'm thinking, you know, is how would we handle it there if we're going to do that similar thing here behind it? So I think we could stop the alcohol part of the discussion and see if Abby has any comments on the fence.
Sure, I would just say that I would reiterate what Mark and, and Tony and Joe have said about the unsightliness and looking to find a, I strongly support finding a permanent solution to help the Park District because I think it's, I think what they're doing is a fabulous addition to our downtown and our, and our summer, summer events. And there's a permanent solution that, that exists out there that does not involve the unsightly fencing and the, and the keep off the grass vibe that we're giving off in one of our gems of our downtown. So those were just my, my quick support.
Nick?
Yes, thank you. I, I like the direction of this conversation. It's, it's about. Um, I, I like the direction of this conversation. It's, it's about, um, creativity and coming up with solutions. We should further the, a couple of these conversations for sure, but a couple of ideas that come to mind for me are, one, um, maybe uh, limiting the area for alcohol sales. So we could limit the fenced area. Maybe if you want alcohol, you have to go sit at this one, one section and that can limit the fencing area. Another idea that, that, uh, comes to mind is meeting in the middle. Maybe we don't have to have them take it down every week, but like after tomorrow, there's not a concert for two weeks. And that's over a holiday weekend where there's a lot of traveling. I assume we'll have a lot of visitors. It's not a good weekend for us to have our downtown look unsightly for no event for two weeks. Um, I think there are things, uh, I, I want to support coming up with a solution and working with the Park District. I, I love this series and, and want to come up with a solution, but just keeping it up and this being our solution long-term is, is a, I don't like. Um, and then I, I also want to make a statement that, uh, not as an Alderman, as a, uh, as a resident, uh, as a board member of, of Main Street, that I do want to get back to, uh, I don't know, or, or create maybe a conversation regarding how do we get back to how it was where, um, picnic tables can be uh, shared and used or rented amongst different, um, different organizations within the city. Because I know, um, from what I understand, the Park District has now stopped that due to, to liability. For example, with cocktails in the park. So I do want to look, brainstorm and maybe, uh, come together in that regard too to, to overcome that issue.
Um, Alderman Serone, could you, um, be, explain to me exactly what, um, you are proposing with that? That the city council discuss whether the Park District should loan private organizations?
No, no, no. I, I took off my Alderman hat. I talked as a, uh, a resident slash board member of Main Street. I, I want to, that, that'll be between us and, and I'm assuming that, that, that position would affect our relationship as a city. If, if they can't do reliability, uh, loan out or rent out picnic tables, that, that will affect us as a city as well and other organizations.
So is there anything that you're directing staff to do on that? Just so that I'm clear.
Uh, no, I'm suggesting that I reach out to Eric offline maybe and set up a meeting where we can talk about this. And if it has to come to the city because it affects the city, then, then we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess.
Alan, me, one more comment.
Go ahead.
I, I was, I was under the impression that the concerts were on the weekend and not like on a week, on a weekday Wednesday, right? It's where every Wednesday, like leaving them up on the weekend when there's more people out, there's more people downtown. It, it's not a good look. I was down here with my kids and we had no idea what was going on. I had no idea there's going to be construction. I mean, it looks like something I could have thrown together with a couple of friends. We, it, it, it needs to come, in my mind, it needs to come down and only be up during the concerts. That, that's my thought.
And, and especially if it's not going to be a concert out there for two weeks straight, I think it needs to come down.
Over a holiday?
Until that Wednesday when the next concert is. I mean, I, I know that that's tough for the Park District to, to man and to pay for, but I think that's the reality that we can't just leave that out there the entire time.
Um, Alderman Vogel Singer has her hand up.
Okay.
I agree with what everybody else has said about the unsightliness. I've heard things from people in my ward wondering exactly what you guys have said. Is there more construction and what are we doing? I think it's a deterrent, um, especially to have it up Saturday mornings when we have so much traffic from out of town guests and visitors. Um, Eric, what is the amount of time it takes to put up and take down the fence? Just so we all have a frame of reference.
Um, four guys, about two and a half hours.
Uh, total or for one to set it up, two and a half hours?
Yeah, to set it up. And see for us though, when we have to set it up during the workday, then the guys go back out into their normal duties that, that puts them going past the normal work hours. And right now we're at no overtime. So then our service would be, uh, reduced in the parks and then we even get more complaints, so.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I was just wondering what, um, that job looks like. Thank you.
Yes.
Eric, is this something you guys can do and hire as seasonal help for, with some of, and a lot of the college students back home?
Well, uh, we had very, very, uh, small turnout for seasonal employees. Uh, we had budgeted 15 like we always do in the summer and we had four people apply. We hired all four of those and two of them have left for better paying opportunities. Uh, so currently, uh, we are very, very strapped on help. And we're, we're experiencing that at all levels. Um, there's incentives that companies are offering for employment everywhere. And so we're in competition with a significant pool, just like everybody else.
And a quick question, this is Chris Soffa again, just so that everybody who's watching can see. What's the youngest person you're going to hire for seasonal help if they're interested?
Um, they ha, they have to be 18 years of age. Uh, we, we can modify the duties to comply to 16 and 17-year-olds, but Department of Labor uh, requires 18 and older for the type of equipment that would be operated on a daily basis.
Thank you.
I know it's a tough position to be in, to try to, you know, make that decision.
I think we have a very short timeframe.
Right.
And, you know, again, I look at the amount of people that come downtown in the middle of the week and go to our restaurants and give that business to our restaurants. So it's not only just a driver for alcohol sales, it is a driver in the middle of the week for our restaurants.
Right, for people to be there. I mean, I, I get, you know, you bring another 500 people downtown, they are naturally going to be, you know, I always joke about the 10%. If 10% of those people go to a restaurant, that restaurant gets more money that, you know, that night. So, or they find a restaurant that they want to go back to later in the week or, you know, another week.
Alderman Malay has his hand up.
Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, um, just wanted to comment, uh, Jennifer, uh, that I don't think the, the, the wine sales are driving the large turnout is the point.
No, they're not, but they're coming down to our restaurants and servicing our restaurants.
Yes, exactly. And that'll happen with those, with.
They did last year.
I guess I'd propose a question to Eric. If you had to pay the overtime or you had to hire the people to take the fence up and down, would that outweigh what you're going to make off the, uh, wine sales?
The wine sales is just another level of service that we're providing people to socialize. A lot of communities offer that. Uh, I, I really don't think that it would, uh, factor into the decision. Um, if, if we had our staff and we could afford to do that on a regular basis, we would, we would still be asking for the permission, but we would have to make changes. It's, um, it's just frustrating to figure this out.
Right, I'm just thinking for this year.
I appreciate your effort, yep.
Alderman Malay, did you still have your hand up?
I meant to lower it, sorry.
No problem.
I do. I'll, I'll just, again, I, I think there's some consensus that, that we want to be good partners and, and help out in this. Is, is there somewhere in the middle, um, especially with the holiday weekend coming? Um, is this decision going to be impacting us immediately? Um, you know, what, what was understood for this year as, as the fence went up?
That we.
Uh, we, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, Eric, I was just going to say that, you know, that the fence would go up and we would see, you know, what, what the response to it was and then have a conversation about, you know, what has the impact been? Cause I think it was hard for us to determine at that point without it being in place, how much of an impact it would be. And so now we have two concerts under our belt and, um, we have had sufficient time to, um, see how we feel about it. And it seems like it's a good timing to come back. Um, you know, a suggestion might be to, um, allow them to put the signage up to see if it, um, assists with, you know, the misconception that there's construction going on over there. And then, you know, maybe in the off-season to discuss some of how we can do things differently next year. But to Alderman Barron's points, that last year was a really difficult year for our Park District's ability to raise revenue in their traditional fashion.
Is there, what, what about, uh, you know, another alternative to that, um, meeting in the middle? Is there a way, for example, uh, after tomorrow's concert, taking it down and in two weeks when it goes back up, putting it in a smaller, determining an area that alcohol sales would be allowed and putting it up permanently in a, as a smaller portion of the park?
Certainly we could, uh, I do support the holiday weekend with the, the distance in between. Um, I think that's a good idea and it would be good faith on our part. A, a smaller section, I just, you know, seeing as how we're all talking about feelings and how it looks, I, I would, I would think that they would feel even more separated or segregated and caged like. Whereas when we push it out as far as we do have it, um, it doesn't have that real containment feel, even though it's smaller than the footprint that we would use for Windmill City Fest. Um, but it's something we definitely can consider.
I, I get that point. There's no, the, the cages. I guess there's an increased feel of cage on one Wednesday, but maybe a, a lesser feel of fencing and ugliness the other six days of the week. I, I.
Yes, sir.
I don't even know if there's really a, a logical area that would make sense. I'm just thinking, we've got two weeks if, if, um, if we can't come up with a, a, a better idea. Um, at, at least we have two weeks to really look at it as, you know, staff to look at it, for you guys to look at it to see if there's a way to make sense. Um, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I, I would agree. I'm okay if we can take it down after this week's. And then when it goes back up in two weeks, if it's going to stay for the remainder of the, you know, three or four, whatever it is to the end, that it has to be signed. So one, it helps promote the concert and two, gives people an idea what the fence is there for.
What about, um, a, a, an opinion from everyone or, uh, those that have the concern? If we were to remove the section of fence that was, um, on the city property, so there's that sign kiosk that's parallel to Houston Street. Pretty much everything, uh, east of that kiosk is city property where the flagpoles are in the War Memorial. And so the fence currently goes along the sidewalk. If we were to remove that section, then it would open up that whole lawn area and then we would leave the section on Park District property. But the entire fence wouldn't be gone every Wednesday, after every Wednesday.
So that would, that would leave the frontage along Houston Street with the fence?
A part of it.
A part of it?
Yes.
Then I think I, I would be okay with that. And I think that's where the sign should be then, so that people can see that when they're on the bike path, pulling in and out of parking spaces and what naturally to me is the face of the, that fence.
Okay.
Yeah, and frankly, having the sign is going to draw people that don't even know.
Right, and I think it'll help benefit that and bring more people down to it. And, I don't know, Scott, can they put on there that wine is available?
I don't, I don't think that's like the big draw. I think it's just the music.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, they're allowed temporary, they're allowed temporary signage. I mean, there's, there are provisions in the ordinance that would allow it. And they could say frankly, whatever they want is seen, so.
Right. So I, I would really like to see the sign out there because I think if there's something there, then people will, oh, it's for a reason, it's there for, I didn't know there was a concert here on Wednesday night. And that's why it's there. Cause I think you're right, Eric. I think if you try to cordon this off into a small area, then you're going to get the drinkers versus the non-drinkers there where if they're all spread out in the middle of it, nobody knows it was doing what. And I think that's fine.
I like the suggestion. Thank you.
We do do that at Windmill City Fest though. We have a beer tent.
Right.
Which sections off everybody.
But the beer tent is full of people eating food that aren't drinking.
Actually, the, the perimeter is the larger area, Mike.
Okay.
You can come, you can come outside
Okay.
of the beer tent with your beer.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, they changed it a little. They, they used to sort of restrict the access to not in the midway area by where the rides were. But since they took all of that, the carnival type of, um, rides in such a way and it's just sort of the bouncy house, big slide and things like that. They put the perimeter on the very outside.
But they have fencing all the way around.
Yes.
And they put that up, like either that Monday or that Friday. So that is up for over a week. That, that is up. I mean.
For the three-day event.
Yeah, people know. But, you know, because of the time that it takes to put up, put up that fencing and it's even there until the following Monday, once the festival's over.
Right.
That's correct. And for the length of time that that fence is up or why we put it up early is to support the amenities that we bring in, whether it's a carnival or this year we'll be going back to the inflatable's.
Okay, so are, are we okay with taking it down for the two weeks that nothing's happening? When it goes back up, it has a sign on it and that stays up till the end of the series, but the other section of it comes down. So it looks more open.
I'm okay with that.
It's a good start.
Okay, I think we can compromise and we can come up with something that hopefully works and just make sure that the sign, uh, doesn't outsize the fence. And I think we can get that past our community development department.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks for coming back to Eric and, and filling in.
Yes.
Not a problem and thank you all very much for working this out. You are an awesome partner and we completely appreciate you.
Thank you.
Have a great Independence Day.
It's good to work together.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on then to project status.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just bring this up here. Um, a few things, um, with regard to the parking space minimums and maximums, discussion is going to go to our plan commission on July 21st. Um, the plan for the Avenue Chevrolet developments, um, is going to go to plan commission on August 4th. Um, there's a lot of finishing work going on, on, uh, Main Street. We've got the, uh, manhole adjustment work is going to, uh, wrap up this week in preparation for, uh, the paving of Route 31. And, um, we have been a little bit delayed due to all of the rain that we've been having lately. Um, the electrical subcontractor Tri-Tech will continue working on the traffic signal at Route 31 and Main. Um, quite a bit of, um, information from our police department this week. Uh, we received notice that we have, um, been awarded a grant that will cover most of the cost of the body worn camera program. Our new social worker from our partners at Association for Individual Development has begun working inside the Batavia Police Department on Thursdays of each week. Um, they've also begun working on internal in-service training sessions for our officers. And, um, she was recently depo, deployed in the field on a crisis intervention call. So that partnership is really working very well and AID is also working with our partners in, uh, up and down in the Fox Valley to offer this type of. partners in uh up and down in the Fox Valley to offer this type of assistance. Um, and it's really been a a terrific addition to um supplement our force, provide the um the training and then also to be involved in the crisis calls. Our Batavia Police Department members are participating in a joint training session with attorneys from King County State's Attorney's Office on Friday, July second regarding changes to the Illinois compiled statutes that will go into effect with the um Safety Act um becoming law on in July. Um, they're doing their biannual CPR AED training for the entire BPD workforce. Um, there have been numerous instances in past years where the um skilled training of our officers and the use of AEDs have resulted in saving lives. Our police officers in those situations are oftentimes the first ones responding to a call of a person in need of help out in the public who is experiencing a cardiac event. And so um it's important training and um again, our officers have definitely been able to save lives with this training. Um, we'll also be sending two officers to the Police Bicycle Operators Course in September as part of a joint initiative with the Batavia Bicycle Commission to put Batavia Police Department officers back on bicycles in the community to increase positive interactions with bicyclists and to educate bicyclists, pedestrians and motor vehicle operators on safety related issues. Um, also wanted to let you know that today we had a a great meeting with the uh Ride Illinois group. They are the organization that the city worked with fifteen years ago and the development of our current bike plan. And so one of our strategic initiatives is to update the bike plan, but also to act uh add in the active transportation elements to it as well. And so then we also invited to the same meeting the Active Transportation Alliance. And um at that meeting, we learned that Active Transportation Alliance has worked in on several projects with Ride Illinois to provide an active transportation plan for um different and and various communities throughout northern Illinois. And so um we'll look forward to uh putting together a plan for updating our um plan and 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 bringing that back to city council so that we can get the update of our plan underway. We'll also talk with um some other organizations that do the same thing so that we can kind of compare and contrast the qualifications of different parties who might assist us with that project. Um, our next joint meeting with the Batavia Park District Board, um, and the um project with Hitchcock Design Group to come up with a master plan for the Fox River Corridor through Batavia will be on July thirteenth at six o'clock PM. Um, the Park Board requested that we meet again to look at the alternatives that were presented back in the two thousand report um that the IDNR did um to look at uh some of those other proposed alternatives um in addition to the four that had been presented at the last meeting to you. And we're hoping that the result of that meeting will be that um both boards are able to decide on a list of alternatives that would then be presented to the public um at public meetings to gather their opinions and o- offer the opportunity for them to ask questions about um the different proposed alternatives. And um both do public meetings, but also as um Alderman Beck had suggested, um to do polling also, um, you know, offer electronic means of providing input into the process as well. And so at this point, that public meeting, we're thinking we're going to have it on July twenty ninth. But so that is tentative um to be determined by the uh result of the July thirteenth meeting. Um, and also just to let everyone know that our uh in-person attendance requirement at public meetings um will resume once the current um executive order for the disaster declaration expires on July twenty fourth. So any meetings that happen after July twenty fourth, um in person, uh elected officials must attend in person unless it satisfies one of the exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. Um, and so we'll likely be putting this room back together and into the dais that most people remember, although for some it has been, you know, this has been the only way that you you have experienced it. But we'll put the room back together in the the ordinary dais um format for those meetings once we resume in-person attendance. Um, and that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes.
I have a question. Um, you mentioned the uh Avenue Chevy development.
Yes.
Originally that I thought that was going to include um Douglas floor covering and I see that they are already moving into the Fridays.
Yes.
And the reus are moving up there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Into into the Fridays building?
So.
Friday building in the park.
I think that um that when when all is said and done, that you will have five new retail establishments on that side of Randall Road, which is amazing and and uh just such a, it says something about people's confidence in building new retail.
So there's still our users and everything that's going in at the one on McKee Street and Randall?
Yes.
And then there's also an additional one now?
Yes.
As well as?
Parking lot to the south of the EGI Friday.
Okay.
Another.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, the four lots on the McKee Chevy or the the Avenue Chevy property.
Right.
And then there'll be probably, we haven't received a submittal officially yet other than, you know, the sign that's out there. But there will be a development proposed for that reuse of the of the Fridays building and then a development on the parking lot that's excess parking.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I already saw their sign is out there on Randall Road for where they're going to be.
It's not much of a secret now.
Right, and I have and I haven't seen plans for it yet. So I didn't know what was up with that. So, okay. So it's the only question I have. Anybody else?
Yes.
Laura, the when what time is the meeting again on the thirteenth, the joint meeting?
The joint meeting is is at six o'clock PM, immediately preceding the committee of the whole meeting that starts at seven.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. I know that there's been some sparse attendance at six. I'm assuming it runs into some people's workday and I just wonder if we just push cow uh cow meeting back to seven thirty so we could do six.
I was going to ask that too because.
Yes, that's that's a good idea.
Because we really had to cram everything into that last meeting and I felt bad for some of the people that were here that, you know, we had to stop at the end of that meeting and then kind of explain things to them that, yeah, you all showed up, but we really don't have time for you to speak today because we have another meeting to do, you know, we're already ten minutes beyond by the time we ended.
Right.
So.
You know, it's an excellent point. And the one of the reasons why we chose the thirteenth as opposed to the twentieth is because the Park Board meeting is on the twentieth. And remember last time it was they had to go because it's their monthly board meeting. With regard to a committee of the whole meeting, we can be a little bit more flexible about what time it starts. So yeah, that there's no problem there. We can have that scheduled to start at seven thirty, but even if we get it to be seven thirty.
Right.
We don't necessarily have to begin.
Just don't load that meeting up.
At seven thirty.
Yeah, I I would just look to maybe even make, if there's anything that would be in the cow, that could be, it could be a light meeting somehow, just so it's not anything that we'd want to have to discuss immediately or something like.
Right, and I and I don't want to rush that.
Exactly.
I really don't want to rush it. If we're going to go back and go through some of the history on this and talk through those different things.
An hour may not be enough.
Yeah. You know, an hour and a half may not be enough, but let's try to do that and at least give us that extra half an hour.
I mean, if there's any way to not have a cow that that we, I know we're missing it next.
We certainly could. We'll probably have rather a long one the following week because as you recall, we want to come back mid-year and Gary Holm will have a presentation about the major um capital projects that we have in our plan, but which do not have any funding source. Things like Carriage Crest and Mahoney Creek and and those types of projects. Um, so we had, we could put that on uh the twentieth.
Okay.
Then.
Okay.
That discussion.
Thank you.
Does anybody online have any questions? Be nice when I don't have to do that. Anyone have any others tonight? Okay, anybody want to make a motion to go in an executive session?
Motion to move to executive session.
Setting the price of land for sale and the purchase of real estate.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion second by Saron. Roll call, please.
Nah?
Aye.
Chantet? Is he there anymore?
We lost Dan.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Absent.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uar?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
And Beck?
Aye.
Twelve out of thirteen, twelve out of fourteen.
Okay, Dan, you are not there. I don't, okay.